Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkins.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent. Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any new additions or deletions to the agenda? Councilman Anderson.
I'd like, under New Business, to talk about the wastewater rate hearing.
Thank you. Any other new business? Councilman DeBlick?
Yeah, I have one announcement under item 15. I guess it would come.
And I would like to make a note under New Business that I would like to talk about the White Paper that we shall present to the council. Consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items. Do I hear any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Scheduled hearing, Bruce, did you want to talk to us about that?
I will open the public hearing. Mayor Yanish, members of the council. The purpose of the hearing tonight is to consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would permit an increase in garage door heights from 10 feet under the current ordinance to a proposed height of 12 feet. The reason that the planning commission has offered this amendment is because they recently made some decisions on how to deal with detached structures, the height of detached structures, and the function of detached structures in residential neighborhoods, and they thought it was appropriate to come back with a height amendment, a door height amendment, that would be consistent with the other changes. We're trying hard to keep the neighborhoods looking neighborly and by allowing people to have more space to store their personal belongings indoors rather than putting them outside in the yard, we think it really goes a long way in preserving our neighborhood character. With that said, it's the recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Do we have any ... Anybody in the audience that cares to comment on this? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the council.
A move that we give it a number and publish it, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Excuse me, a motion has been made and seconded to give the public hearing and the ordinance -- or to give the ordinance a public hearing and to sign a number and publish it. All those in favor, is there any discussion, first of all?
Mr. Mayor, just a question with a building or garage that has a 12-foot door, that's going to increase the size of the garage itself, and what you'd be looking at under our current ordinance, is there current building codes? Can they put up a metal-type building?
Under our current codes, the architectural characteristics of the exterior of the detached structure should meet the exterior, match the exterior of the home. That's been interpreted differently over the years. We certainly like to see a color match, and now we've even gone so far as to require materials match for consistency in the neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Bruce, thank you for doing this. I want to receive a couple of phone calls from an individual who's -- that I talked to you about who was building a garage. Just for his RV, he was quite surprised to realize, of course, that there was no garage or height big enough to get his in, so he was going 11 foot 6 inch, and he built it for that purpose, and I think that's accommodating. I'd much rather see them parked inside rather than outside in the driveways or in the streets.
Yeah. Well, it got to be kind of almost a ridiculous regulation because we allow two-story detached structures. You've already got the height, you've got the bulk of the building. To go from a 10-foot door to a 12-foot door is meaningless, so it was a change that needed to be made.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I think we'll do a roll call. Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. And that carries ... CenterPoint Energy donation to Wilmer Fire Department for purchase of thermal imaging camera. Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Yanish and members of council. As a department director, I feel it's important when the fire department's seeking opportunities to purchase new equipment to look for alternative services or sources of funding. And I became aware of the Excel -- or excuse me, Excel, let's try that again, CenterPoint. CenterPoint Energy's community partnership grant, and the fire department applied for it back in March, and we were actually awarded a $2,500 grant for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera. Just as a reflection, the thermal imaging camera, if I can speak tonight, is an imager that allows us to expeditiously search for residents in the event of a fire and to get those folks out quickly. So I request through resolution that the council accept the gracious donation from CenterPoint Energy for the purchase or the $2,500 towards the purchase of a thermal imaging camera, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Deb Oderash, and I'm from CenterPoint Energy. The community partnership grant program reached $1 million in donations this year. The grant program offers an opportunity for CenterPoint Energy to partner with local fire or police departments, supporting our shared commitment to safety. Over the past 10 years, the program has proudly helped support the funding of 560 projects in the communities throughout the company's service area. Through the grant program, we are able to help cities leverage local funds to purchase needed safety equipment or support safety projects that are important to our community. I am pleased that the city of Wilmer is a community partnership grant recipient during this milestone year for $2,500 that will be used to purchase a thermal imaging camera for the fire department. Thank you.
And thank you so much. Go ahead.
Well, no, that's all I had, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
We need to have a resolution, I understand, to accept the donation, and thank you so much for the $2,500, we appreciate that. I know you'll make good use of it for the thermal imaging camera.
Disgusting, mayor. I'd like to introduce the resolution. We accept the donation of $2,500 from CenterPoint Energy for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera for the Wilmer Fire Department and draft a thank you letter to CenterPoint Energy to be delivered to them from the council.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Kevin, would you like to read that back to us?
It's a resolution to accept.
Resolution to accept, yeah.
$2,500 community grant from CenterPoint Energy and to draft a letter of appreciation for the donation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. That passes, and thank you very much again.
Thank you.
At this point, the best part of being mayor is I get to introduce these lovely young ladies, and of course Lori.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you, on behalf of the Wilmer Fest Board. Well, we'd like to -- we're so honored that Mayor Yanish and the council members, city administrator, have offered and let us come to address the council this evening. First of all, I'm not on the board currently this year, but I am still involved, and I'm hospitality administrator this year, so I get to have the party, I guess. But I'd like to thank you, the councilmen, the mayor, for all your support for Wilmer Fest and the city festival for the past years. Your support and your outgoing generosity have been greatly, greatly appreciated. And furthermore, I'd like to thank you that you let your departments in the city help us greatly, the Public Works Department, the ambulance, the fire department, and of course, the police department. They are always there when we need them, and they don't complain, and they're just always at different functions when we need them, so I'd like to thank them as well. First of all, we also have tons of support in the community, in our business, donors, and they're also great sponsors. The other thing is, we do do some fundraising to also help the festival. Our ambassadors and candidates sell raffle tickets, buttons, and community barbecue tickets, so we do a little fundraising to help out our cause as well. The first big thing I'd like to add this year is that Rudy from Rack8 went with us to the South Dakota Snow Queen Festival this year, and he did a film for us for his out-and-about show, and I have CDs I'd like to present. Everyone, you take those with you, and you look at them. And what he basically did with this is he wanted to show the community of Wilmer what our ambassadors do. They look lovely at every event, but that's not all they do. They are city ambassadors, and we just wanted to present that, to show you what they actually do. And Aberdeen is an extended stay, but they do that at every community that they go to. So we just wanted to present you and thank Rudy for all his hard work, and his Rack8 employees are always there, willing to help and film and do whatever we need of them too, so we appreciate them. The other thing I'd like to do is to invite you all to attend our Wilmer Fest events for the coming week, June 17 through the 22nd. And the ambassadors, I'll have them come up, and they have some thank yous and introductions to do. And again, on behalf of the board, thank you for all your support, and we couldn't do it without the city's help, so thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kaitlin Blumquist. I'm the 2013 International Princess, and I'd just like to thank you all for having us tonight.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sarah Rodelius, and I am the 2013 Aqua Princess. I would also like to thank you very much for having us tonight.
Hello, my name is Marie Nellis-Meltzer, and I am the 2013 Wilmer Fest Queen of Festivals. And I would just, once again, like to thank you all for inviting us to speak at this -- at your meeting this evening, and we have a little bit of a presentation for you, so thank you.
As you all may know, Wilmer Fest was formerly known as Coffee Fest, and with Coffee Fest came the Coffee Fest Queen. In 1988, Coffee Fest transformed into Wilmer Fest, and with that transformation also came the transition from Coffee Fest Queen to the Wilmer Fest Queen of Festivals. Lori Parati Waltz was the last Coffee Fest Queen and also the first Wilmer Fest Queen of Festivals. And also in 1988 was the year that they added the princesses, the Aqua International and --
Ramires.
Our past ambassadors, I'm just going to introduce the queens. In 2012 was Shelley Summers, 2011 was Megan Michaels, and 2010 was Caitlin Schlegel.
This year's royal family includes Allison Bruin as our junior princess, Jesus Castiano as our junior prince, and Elaine Frank and Meyer and Frank as our senior ambassadors, and then us, of course, Caitlin Blumquist, the international princess, Sarah Rodelius, the Aqua princess, and Marie Nellis-Meltzer as the Queen of Festivals. I would like to take this time to invite you all to the different events that'll be happening during the Wilmer Fest week. Lindsay was passing out a copy of all the different events. Some I'd like to highlight is on Wednesday, June 19, is the Senior Coronation, which is held at 2:00 PM at the Wilmer Community Center. And then on Thursday, June 20, is the Wilmer JC's Block Party. Some events that are happening during the Block Party is the Junior Coronation, the Fireman's Challenge, Wilmer's Got Talent, and you will also be able to get a chance to see the candidates present themselves onstage. And then on Friday, June 21, is the Community Barbecue and the Wilmer Stingers Game. Tickets for those are $15, and that includes your entry to the barbecue as well as the Stingers Game. During the Stingers Game, you'll be able to enjoy the ballgame, and also in between innings, you'll be able to see the candidate, the candidates participate in different activities and challenges, running around the field, kind of embarrassing themselves, but it's all in good fun. And then on June 22 is the Wilmer Fire Department's Pancake Feed, and that is from 7 until 2 at the Wilmer Fire Department. Then is the -- there's the Grand Day Parade, which begins at 10:30. The Wilmer Ambassador Coronation is at WAC Auditorium, and that begins at 4:30. Following that is the Beach Party at Robins Island, and during that time, you will be able to see the new ambassadors present themselves for the first time, and then the raffle ticket winners will be drawn. Those tickets are $20, and like Lori said, you can purchase those from us or any of our candidates, and the grand prize is $1,000. And if you lose your schedule, there is also, if you buy a button for $5, that comes with a scheduled all the events. Not only do we get to attend the Wilmer Fest events all through the week, we are given the opportunity to travel around the state as well into South Dakota and visit different towns and participate in different festivities and see how other people celebrate their community. One I would like to touch on is the Aberdeen-South Dakota Snow Queen Festival. We were able to travel there in a bus with Rudy V. Hill, and if you watch the video, you get to see all the fun activities we get to do. One of the fun things we got to do was play a game called Frostopoly, where we got to drive around the city with different dignitaries from other towns, and it was basically like a scavenger hunt throughout the city. We got to learn about Aberdeen and other different sponsors that associate themselves with the Aberdeen Snow Festival. It was a really fun event, but really tiring, but it was definitely one of my favorite things that we went to this year.
And as Wilmer Fest ambassadors, we get to represent this wonderful city and also host events. I'm going to talk about our holidays events, and we got to spend a little time with Mary Yanish, and we invited several surrounding communities to celebrate Wilmer in the winter. And with that, we made crafts for the senior citizens that are in the -- in homes, and we played bingo with them and just talked with them and hung out. Later that evening, we went to downtown, and we got to spend more time within the community and really just open everyone's eyes that we are volunteering and we want to be a part of the community and give back to the community. And then, of course, we had the parade, and it was a lot of fun. All the other floats were lit up with Christmas lights, and it's just, it's always fun to see children's faces just light up, and it's fun giving back to the community and having something to look forward to for young women, maybe, you know, they all want to be a princess, so it's just, it's always nice.
Thank you.
And one event that was also very fun that we got to go to last summer was the Minneapolis Aquatennial, which I will get to compete at this summer in July. We went down last year, the second full week of July, to see what the Minneapolis Aquatennial was about. We got to watch the former Queen of Festivals Shelley Summers compete, and we also got to participate in a few fun events ourselves. We were able to go to a Twins game and participate in what is known as Sparkle Night, where visiting dignitaries from all over the state go to a Twins game and wear their crowns, so we take up a whole section, and it's known as the Sparkle Section. And then we were able to watch Shelley present herself as a Queen of the Lakes candidate during Meet the Candidate, which is an opportunity for all of the Queen of the Lakes candidates to present themselves for the first time to the general public. And we were also able to watch the coronation of the 2012 Queen of the -- 2012 Queen of the Lakes and the Aquatennial princesses. And as I said, I will be able to, I will have the privilege and honor of representing the city of Wilmer at the 2013 Minneapolis Aquatennial during the 10 Best Days of Summer, and I'm looking forward to that, to being able to use some of the skills that I've learned and honed over the past year. And one fantastic learning opportunity for us as ambassadors has been to carry out our Tiara Project. Tiara is an acronym that stands for Thanks in Action From Your Royal Ambassadors, and this year, the ambassadors partnered with Safe Harbor, which is a very new organization. It was started in 2012, and it's through Community -- or Heartland Community Action Agency. It is an organization that is aimed at eradicating homelessness in the Wilmer area. We were approached by Mike Botzik to really be a face for his program, for the cause, because it is such an invisible problem. He asked the Wilmer Fest ambassadors if we would do some PR work for him, and we heartily agreed, we -- he explained the program to us, and it's not just a place for people to stay, or if they're experiencing homelessness, it's truly a remediation process. They are put up in a hotel for 30 to 40 days, and then they, while they're staying in the hotel, they are working with career counselors and with banks to get them into affordable housing and to get them back into the working world to truly solve the problem as opposed to simply give them a temporary fix. And we were able to work with his program, and they will have a float right behind the Wilmer Fest ambassadors in the Grand Day Parade, so you can look for them during the parade. And we were also able to raise a bit of money to help start adding a few more hotel rooms to their current program, and we raised $1,133 with donations from around, businesses around the community at our 2013 Wilmer Fest kickoff gala, and we were able to donate that money to Safe Harbor so they can have a start to their new fundraising goals. We were able to get all of the items for our silent auction donated. It was a wonderful, eye-opening experience to see just how supportive and generous this community truly is, and so for that, we would all love to say a huge thank you to you and to this community for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. I think what we'll do is, you guys, if I can say this, can the mayor say this, what I'm going to say?
I hope so.
You beautiful ladies have represented our city very, very well, and I want to thank you again for the job that you do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I've seen a lot of different royalty come here. I just want to say, the way you presented yourself tonight, there's no doubt in my mind why you were chosen to fill the positions you did. You're poised, and you're very articulate, and you have a great presentation. I think you're on your way to public service, maybe in a political office in the future if you keep this up.
[laughing]
It was very, very good. It was very good. Thank you.
We wouldn't wish that on, would we?
No, maybe not.
Thank you again. At this particular moment, I think we'll move into the open forum.
No one has signed up, Mr. Mayor.
No one has signed up? Okay. Councilman, did you have a committee report to make?
No, no, we didn't.
Labor Relations Committee report for May 29. Councilman Amen.
We met Wednesday, May 29. People present were myself, Mr. Dawkins, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Christiansen, and our city administrator, Charlene Stevens. Other people present included Frank Madden, our labor attorney, the attorney via conference call. Meeting was called to order at 4:50. Chairman Amen asked if there was any public comment, and there was none. We closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 to discuss labor negotiations, labor negotiation strategies. We moved to close the meeting at 4:55 for the purpose of discussing labor negotiation strategies pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13.0D. Meeting reopened at 5:50 PM, and that was made and carried. Item number four was the Public Works Superintendent Retirement and Authorization to Fill the Vacancy. City Administrator Stevens stated that a vacancy would occur in the Public Works Superintendent position due to retirement in July and asked for authorization to fill the vacancy. Ms. Stevens stated that the position was critical to operations and remain the same in any of the proposed realignment strategies. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded and carried to authorize advertisement and fill in the vacancy of Public Works Superintendent due to retirement with an internal advertisement occurring before an external advertisement. And that, by the way, is Mr. Ron Gilbertson, been here for over 30 years, who is retiring. And I would move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to fill the, fill and advertise the position by Mr. Ron Gilbertson due to retirement. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question of the committee, why you would not advertise internally and externally at the same time, now an open and competitive interview process?
Right now, Ms. Stevens thought we'd open it up to the public. It's going to be posted for approximately two weeks, correct?
In this scenario, we'd post it internally first. I mean, that was the committee's recommendation, so approximately two weeks, and then we would open it to the public after that.
Is there any further discussion? This is a motion.
Standing motion.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
There was no old business. Item number five, number six, Councilman Anderson raised the idea of the council retreat to occur late summer or fall, ideally at an off-site location. Also, all the committee members were also going to be bringing that up. I think there were three or four of us that all agreed that we needed to get this on the agenda to talk about it. Committee members stated it would be important for all council members to participate. Mr. Anderson made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Dawkins, to have the city administrator begin plans for a council retreat to be held in the fall of 2013 at an off-site location with a facilitator yet to be determined, and that motion carried. I would move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded. Would you care to tell us the motion again, state the motion again?
The motion is simply to prepare to have a council retreat to be held in the fall of 2013 at an offset, off-site location.
Okay, and do we need to put in there the speaker?
The facilitator yet, we haven't gotten to that.
Facilitator.
I think the city administrator will be working on that. That would be one of the things that we asked.
Okay. It'll come back to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further discussion?
Just a question, and it was, if I understand correctly, it was just discussed late summer or fall. I just wondered why we were waiting till fall.
I'm not sure. I was not at that meeting. Can you tell us why we're waiting so long, or is it just because of the availability of the places to go?
That, we haven't been determined. We just thought it'd be a good time for everybody to set their agenda. We said fall under the assumption that people would take, it'd take some time to get all nine of us and staff to agree on a date, and I don't think that's going to be probably able to be done during the summer with everybody taking vacations and the busy summer schedule and Wilmer Fest and everything else, so we're thinking fall would be a good time. And we have to determine what days are available, so we'll have to communicate that with Charlene as far as what days are available, and if we have, find the facilitator first, then we will find out what dates there are available, and then we're going to have to see if our schedule fits them. So it's going to take a little coordinating, but the intent is to have one as soon as we can.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yeah, I just was curious why fall versus soon as we can.
Unless you want to pick a date right now, but then we'd have to find.
No, I'm okay. All right.
Councilmember Fager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are you looking at all day Friday and ending Saturday at noon, or Friday evening, all day Saturday? Saturday, or what?
We talked about a Friday afternoon, Saturday retreat. I think that's what we've done in the past.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
I also raised the issue of the Minnesota Data Privacy, Data Practice, Minnesota Data Practices Act adhering to the law and the city policy to educate and make council members aware. Ms. Stevens reminded the council that a copy of the policy had been electronically mailed to them, and that the purpose of the policy and the law was to protect private employee data. I just wanted, since Mr. Scott, Robert Scott is here, I'd like to just see if we can clarify this, because there was some information leaked to the press, and that's in violation of the Data Privacy Act, although it might not be. I've talked to you on the phone about it, but I just want to, if you could just refresh our memory about the, how sensitive this information is, and that it shouldn't be disclosed to anybody.
Councilmember Amon, I believe you're referring to information concerning the recent performance evaluation of the city administrator.
That's correct.
It is true that under the Data Practices Act, that is absolutely private employee data that should not be discussed publicly. You and I had had discussions about a newspaper article that appeared. I looked at the article. I did not see any evidence that the act had been violated.
Yeah, and my concern also, just to let you know, is that what was not printed in the paper, the individual leaked that information. We don't know what else they've been saying. And that, I just hope the council, I don't know who leaked it, but that information is private, and it should be kept confidential, not to be talked about. I just wanted to express that was a deep concern of mine, because this could be litigation violations and all kinds of things for the employees. And it's a very fearful item, and it's very well detailed out on the state act. And I just want to caution whoever it was on what they say, or who they say in the future. Thank you very much. The other item was, we also, I raised the issue of succession planning and knowledge transfer as employees retire. I also suggested that the Willmar Municipal Utilities was implementing a program when I met with Wes Hump. And what they're having them do is, and it could be to serve as a model for the city, is that they're having all the people that are gonna be retiring writing down all the information, being very articulate in how they take care of their operations. A lot of it is memorized, so that might make a better transition for the retiring city people that should be leaving in the future. I also commented on recognition of good employee performance and how that might be best communicated. It was suggested to forward compliments and/or concerns through the city administrator's office, which will be passed on properly and put in the employees' file. There be no further business. Meeting is adjourned at 6:30, and I will file a minutes unless there's any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file a minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for May 29th, 2013. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Thank you. I want to go to the item that Chair Amon raised on good employee performance. I did, in fact, send an email through you to our city administrator commenting on the performance over the Memorial Day weekend on behalf of the Willmar Police Department, Chief Wifels, Captain Felton, and Sergeant Osmus, who was really dedicated.
Thank you, I got that.
Also, Mr. Brizendine helped out. The individual that I really want to highlight is Paul Tinklinburg, who is a custodian for the city of Willmar. Paul came to the city auditorium at 8:30, and he stayed there until 1 o'clock. And that was his day off, and he just did a marvelous job. We would not have had as great a presentation. And the auditorium, quite frankly, even in the balcony, there were lots of people that were there for it. But Paul Tinklinburg really was, should be commended for his service to us that weekend.
Thank you. And can we note that in the minutes? I'd like to have that noted in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor filing the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. The Community Development Committee report for May 30th, 2013. Councilman Fagerlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one was public comments. There was no one to speak. Item two was tax increment financing and tax abatement update. Staff provided an update on the city's historical use of tax increment financing and tax abatement tools to assist business and industry. You can see attachment A. It was noted that at one time, the city had sixteen tax increment districts, but as of 2012, all districts had been decertified. The committee was informed that city has used tax abatement to assist five businesses. One of those businesses has had their abatement retired, and three of the remaining four will expire by the end of 2016. With changes to the tax increment financing legislation, tax abatement has become a tool of choice for economic development. And in attachment A, our tax abatement projects were Gurley Foods. That expires in 2015. Northern Factory Sales expired in 2012. Midwest Technology Campus expires in 2016. West Central Steel expires in 2016. And Torgerson Properties will expire and begin in 2016 and expire in 2025. That was just for information only. Item number three was tax abatement policy. Staff presented a draft policy for the use of the tax abatement. This is attachment B. The city council had requested that staff draft a policy to be used to review and evaluate requests for tax abatement. Staff said that it was necessary to keep the policy simple. The draft policy includes sections on purpose, statutory authority, eligible uses, approval criteria, evaluation criteria, project financing, and application and fees. Following a discussion, a motion was made and seconded to adopt the policy as presented. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the tax abatement policy as presented. Is there any discussion?
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few questions. I'm wondering if we shouldn't have added in that policy something about, you know, the but-for test. Why would we want to abate when somebody could do it without having tax abatement? Why wouldn't we put the but-for test in there? But for the fact that they wouldn't do it unless it got abated, you know? If they can afford to do a project without abatement.
Mr. Peterson, would you like to answer that?
Yes, Mayor Yanis, Councilmember Christensen. Under 4.01D, it states that assistance will not be provided solely to broaden a developer's profit margins on a project. Prior to consideration of a tax abatement request, the city may undertake an independent underwriting of the project to help ensure that the request for assistance is valid. That in and of itself is a but-for test. They'll have to demonstrate that there is a gap in the project financing. That gap can be making up the difference between a particular level of return and a market rate of return, if the council so chooses to use it that way. There may be a case where a developer can make a profit on a project, but if it's not a market rate of return, he may not choose to do it, or may choose not to do it, I should say. And the council has the authority of using an abatement temporarily to enhance that rate of return. But again, that's a but-for decision that the council has the authority to make under this policy as drafted.
Then I notice eligible uses under 3.01, housing is in there, must meet one or more of the following uses. I just would like a definition of it. One says to provide a diversity of housing not currently provided by the private market. What is, how would you define diversity of housing?
If someone proposed a housing project, and it was for a type of housing that was determined to be in demand, but that demand was not being met by developers currently in the market, the council would have the authority under this policy to consider that an eligible use. It's that simple. If it's a type of housing that's not being provided for in the current market.
And what would that, what type of housing are you thinking of? I mean, handicap, or elderly, or, because HRA provides a gamut of housing for, that the private sector doesn't.
I will be perfectly honest, I did not write that with any particular type of housing in mind, only to have it be broad enough that the council had some flexibility.
And again, it's entirely up to the council on each abatement request, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Also, number two under B, there are a variety of housing ownership alternatives. How do you define ownership alternative?
Standard titles, or standard deeds. It could be co-op housing. Those are two that we have in our marketplace here that have been used.
Number four, it says to promote neighborhood stabilization and revitalization by the removal of blight and upgrading of existing housing stock in residential areas. Does that mean we would help out by not just, well, just strictly tax abatement, or tearing some buildings down in a block that needed it?
In this particular policy, the council would use tax abatement to help a developer offset the cost of demolition and redevelopment. In all cases, the tax abatement goes to the developer. So if the city has a goal that it wishes to accomplish under a project, you could negotiate with that, with the developer to include that in the project, and in turn, offer him abatement as compensation for doing so.
Have we ever used abatement for, tax abatement for a housing project?
No.
Never have. I said, one of my questions at the top were, why housing? Because I don't think we've ever used abatement for it. And it says here, to promote affordable housing for lower modern income individuals. Now, the abatement wouldn't promote affordable housing, it would just.
The abatement might allow for the developer to offer housing at a lower cost than they could offer it without the abatement for rental housing. It's not gonna, I mean, this doesn't apply to homeownership. Number three doesn't apply to homeownership necessarily, because the developer doesn't control the cost of the real estate taxes.
Okay, I was just wondering where I was in there. Okay, you've answered my questions, I thank you.
Any further discussion? Bruce, I hope I don't embarrass you by saying this, but you did a really good job, as far as I'm concerned, in putting this policy together. And I thank you very much, and keep up the good work. It's a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Yes.
Motion and a second on the table to file the minutes?
No, to adopt the policy.
To adopt the policy. I'm sorry, to adopt the policy, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Also, the committee thanked the staff, too, for doing a job well done, and doing it so quickly. Item number four was new business. The committee discussed the advantages of eliminating paper agendas and meeting packets. We were informed that there will be a request in 2014 capital budget for the necessary software and equipment to move for electronic agenda system. I had brought up the packet thing, because talking with the staff, we could save about two hours for the ladies up front for binding these packets.
Thank you.
I don't see a need, I don't need to have mine binded. When I get home, I rip it, I'll put it in recycling.
I think that would be a decision that you would make, am I correct?
Yeah, we're looking at electronic agendas. We're looking at a way to kind of get it up and running, and then a more robust solution. So we're looking at both ways to do it. We may be able to accomplish the kind of get it up and going before the end of the year, and then look towards a more robust solution in the 2014 budget.
But in the meantime, you could eliminate hardcover and the binding.
Okay, yeah.
Staple it, I mean, we discussed it last fall.
Okay.
And it was the staff's decision, but no one ever told the girls up front.
Okay.
So if we need a motion?
No, I mean, if you are, if you don't need to have them bound, we simply don't need to do that. But I wasn't aware that we had made that there was that discussion last year. I just don't recall that.
We talked about that at the finance committee last fall.
Yep, we can certainly do that.
Well, that's my feeling. I don't know if anyone else has.
Diddle.
Feeling. Under new business also, Councilman Johnson requested that staff provide an update on enforcement of residential maintenance violations. And Bruce was on a talk with Randy and Takealuck. And number five, future agenda items. Staff is preparing information on garbage and waste disposal to review, be reviewed by the committee at a future meeting in downtown Willmar. We have some issues there. And there was a motion to adjourn at 5:30. So if there's no other questions, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for May 30th, 2013. Is there any discussion?
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item that I think we should maybe pursue is, when we do have requests for tax abatement, it would be nice to have this policy either in front of us or up on the screen, especially the page three, following the evaluation criteria that will be used by the city of Willmar, so that we don't have to ask questions about, well, what are we supposed to do in this case or that case? That would be it. Call for the question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Is there any old business that we need to talk about? How about new business?
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for information to the public, prior to our city council meeting at 6 o'clock, we had a council work session where we talked about wastewater treatment rates. We have a proposed rate that we are going to set for a public hearing. That public hearing will be on the 17th of June, shortly after 7:00 PM. So there'll be notification in the paper, but just so that everyone is involved, we are moving forward with the wastewater treatment rate increases.
Thank you. Councilman DeBlee, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would just wanted to thank all the council members that participated in the Greater Lakes Willmar Area 2040 visioning process. Just like to thank everybody that was there and participated on the 20th and 29th in those meetings. And also, reminder to keep their calendars open for the 23rd to the 25th of July, when we'll have some additional meetings. And then, second item, Mr. Mayor, is request to be excused from the June 17th council meeting. I will be attending the event with the municipal utilities that evening, so.
Ah-huh, okay. Thank you.
Chief Wifels, would you like to give us a report on what happened this past weekend?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, many of you have probably heard, and for those that haven't, we had two incidents, separate incidents, this past weekend. It occurred Friday night, early Saturday morning, where individuals had burned two American flags. One incident occurred on Fifth Street within a few blocks from here, and the other one occurred actually right across the street at the Midas muffler shop. We are investigating those crimes. There have been a lot of rumors and speculation and comments made to the Willmar police, many of them directed at the East African community within our town. And I can say with certainty, at this time, from what we've seen on the videos, the belief that the East African community was involved in this event is not true. The videos indicate otherwise. We are attempting to piece. We are attempting to piece video contained from various businesses downtown together, and we have received some names of suspects, and we're investigating it further.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have an item to report on the white paper that I promised. It is done. It will go out in the mail to, in your packets, council people. Am I right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you've asked that that be sent out with the weekly, with the weekly mailing to council, so it will be sent out the end of this week.
Thank you. So please get this back to me as soon as you can, as I do have to make a report to the organizational study people. Is there any other new business that I'm missing? Felton Christiansen?
Just a question for our chief, Mr. Mayor, for me. This burning of the flags, how serious of a crime is it? Is that a felony, or is it misdemeanor? What is it?
It is not, depending upon the value of the flag. Right now, we'd be looking at the charge of criminal damage to property and arson. We have looked into greater events, which a lot of people are concerned about. It's not, there's nothing that indicates, although the two events are believed to be done by the same people, there's nothing to indicate that this is what they call a bias crime, or what was formerly known as hate crimes. There is nothing to indicate that this is a reaction of a larger subversive group in the area, and there's nothing to indicate that this was a terrorist act.
Is it, is it a crime to publicly burn the flag?
Yes. The last, well, no. There's not, it's not a crime to burn the flag. There are suggestions on proper disposal of flags. It's a crime to commit arson. It's a crime to damage property that doesn't belong to you. But the last time that the United States was attempting to enact an amendment was June 27, 2006, where they were going to make it a crime or a law that you could not desecrate the flag. And the government at that time ran into, and this has been attempted before, but the government ran into many obstacles as far as what is considered desecration of the flag, somebody wearing a T-shirt with the flag on it that spills ketchup on it, is that going to be desecration of our flag? And a lot of other issues were considered. So that never got passed, and we currently don't have an amendment that addresses desecration of the flag.
So these crimes are criminal damage to property, basically?
And arson.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Almond?
What supersedes us to pass an ordinance restricting and call it a misdemeanor? Is that superseded by state and federal law?
I didn't hear the question.
Well, my question is, do we have the authority to draft an ordinance claiming the city limits of city Wilmer? It's a gross misdemeanor or misdemeanor to burn the American flag. Do we have that authority? That's a question for Mr. Scott, I believe. Has it been?
I know it's very deep.
The reason I chuckled, it's a, obviously a complicated issue. There are freedom of speech issues.
Right.
I don't think the city council has the authority to pass the ordinance you suggested. It's a different situation when you're talking about someone who is damaging property that does not belong to that person.
Okay.
Damaging property of another, but that doesn't seem to be the situation you presented, so.
I was assuming that was going to be the answer. I just wanted to verify it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman?
Just I know that Chief mentioned that the proper way to dispose of a flag is through burning, and there's various organizations that can do that, and that that's a proper way to do it. But I wouldn't want to see us pass an ordinance that makes it illegal to burn a flag in a city of Wilmer when that's how you properly are disposed of a flag that is, that is being retired, so.
Thank you. Need further discussion?
Well, just want to comment. I was assuming that it, we, the ordinance, if it was that, would be in the case of a terror, terroristic act, and it would show, show, show the reasons why, or to what limits. But just to burn the flag, it's just a personal thought. But I'm not trying to take away freedom of speech, but I am, I am against people burning an American flag and against our country, so.
I think that's echoed by everybody at this table. Councilman Almond, so.
With that, we will move into the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Anderson?
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 10th, at 4:45.
These are at City Hall now?
At City Hall.
Councilman Christiansen? Public Works Tuesday, the 11th, at 4:45. Councilman Almond?
Nothing scheduled yet.
Councilman Fagerly?
We are not having a meeting.
With that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. Motion that has been made and seconded to adjourn, we are adjourned.